This is the regular session of the Arizona Council of the City of Bisbee County and Cochise, State of Arizona, to be held on Tuesday, November 20, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. The Cochise County Board of Supervisors here in the room, 14th and 15th Avenue, Lane 10, G. Bisbee, Arizona. And the time is actually, what is it? It is seven thirty. Thank you. And would you like to repurpose being the last key to the voting, ma'am? Would you please call the roll.
Councilmember Anna Fein.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor Corbin Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Gaines Munster, six Qs. City staff, Robert Smith, city manager. Ashley Cornado, city clerk. Carrie Bagley, county manager. Dwayne Lowery, operations manager. Aubrey Channa, district chief. Christopher Steele, fire chief. Elmo Juno, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our moment of silence, I would like, and then unfortunately bring up the fires in California, the incredibly disruptive, and the fact that it lost five over eighty people with still close to, I think it's lasting like eight hundred still missing. And the fact that two of our men with one of our pieces of equipment was over there fighting those fires, and they came home safely on Saturday. So they are back in Bisbee, and they are safe, and we certainly are thankful for that, and thankful for their service. So we can take just a minute and a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in this pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Would the council like to vote about whether Mr. Wallace is allowed to take his die off? I didn't want to be too involved.
I think you could loosen them.
All right. We have no proclamations. Pardon?
There is one. I failed to list.
Yes.
I think so. It's one of those.
But what I just asked. There is a proclamation, and it's the proclamation Annual Festival of Lights, whereas the annual festival of lights commences this day to launch the Bisbee holiday season, and whereas members of the community and the surrounding area donate their time and talents to participate, bring the community together, and to launch the holiday lights within the city of Bisbee. And now therefore I, David M. Smith, mayor of the city of Bisbee, hereby proclaim November 23rd, 2018, as Festival of Lights Day. In the city of Bisbee, and cordially invite all citizens, visitors, and the surrounding area to attend the Festival of Lights from 4:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Friday, November 23rd, 2018. I do hereby set my hand, cause the great seal of the city of Bisbee to be affixed to this document dated the 23rd day of November, 2018. David M. Smith, mayor. Thank you. And this is at City Park. So we would love for everybody to show up and watch the fun that mostly kids are going to have, but adults have a good time, too. So we're going to go to call of the public, Mr. Richard Green.
Hey, guys.
Welcome.
Mr. Drill.
You know the drill.
Yeah. And, hi, by the way. I just wanted to bring up my disappointment in Proposition 127, the failed to pass requiring the state of Arizona to increase its renewable energy portfolio from the current fifteen percent to fifty percent. APS totally basically lied about how much it'd be per month. They said it was a thousand dollars per month increase. My research found it was only twenty-five dollar increase per month over six years, and that's close to the average increase. So, I don't know. Just disappointed. And this is after the IPCC report came out. We had twelve years to turn this whole system around to solve this problem of pollution and climate change. Administration is undoing all the conservation efforts and past administrations. The state of Arizona is not doing anything that I can see. We have six percent solar, and that's ludicrous. We should be way ahead of that. We have so much time here. I support the local Al's Hammer's petition to close its account, the city of Bisbee's accounts at Wells Fargo, and according to Carrie Bagley, the requests for bids went out. So please, please look at that closely. Wells Fargo was found guilty of identity theft, thousands of people writing ghost accounts, and they do finance unscrupulous behaviors, like many Wall Street banks. So I encourage everybody to bank locally, invest in your community, support local businesses, donate to local nonprofits like Ecoasis in Tin Town, the Tin Town Shelter, or Gore Park Lunches. It is tax deductible. Get fire punches. My aunt just lost her home in Paradise, California, so it could happen here. We have huge forest canopy to deal with on the north slope here. Flooding can happen here, so maybe we could look at some of the check dams and maybe digging them out because it could happen here. Water is an issue. We have three days of water. I think the rate goes down, so maybe we need to build some more cisterns and dig out some of these old wells and test the water, test the soil. I encourage people to think adaptation, resilience, and regeneration for the worst-case scenario because it's not going to get any better. That's my pessimistic opinion. So sorry to be a downer, but that's the way it goes sometimes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green. What good man. Mr. Green. Okay.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $203,800.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why are we now redacting on accounts payable?
Oh, we're redacting employee names, I think. Am I right? I think those are employee names that are being redacted. But it provides the data as to which division is buying it and for what purpose.
I know. We never previously redacted. That's why I'm asking, why are we doing this now?
We never provided all this information until now.
Now, who are names?
Occasionally were names, not in this particular form. This is a different form. But that's the answer. You don't want to redact it? We can certainly talk to legal and to the city manager about it.
Well, I just wanted to hear the city manager's opinion.
Okay. City manager's opinion.
From time to time, there's reimbursements that they provide to employees for shoes and shirts and equipment. And we know what department that's in, we know which employee that is, we know whether or not it's within the budgeted authority for that. And apart from me, I've asked that staff redact the personal names of employees from those types of things. I don't think I should be subject to that, but I can think that the guys working the front line, we're glad that we can provide them the shoes and pants and shirts, but I would rather their names not be associated with the accounts payable documentation. It was what we're certifying to.
Okay, so it's just personal reasons, not legal reasons?
No, ma'am. No legal reason, just trying to be courteous.
Okay.
All those in favor of paying accounts payable, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Please, Carrie. We have two items. Item A, approval of the resignation of a member of the Committee on Disability Issues. And item B is approval of the appointment of Kathy Bright to the Committee on Disability Issues. Councils, anybody have a, want any, either of those votes or further discussion? Hearing none, enter into motion. May I?
Did you have a question?
Do you want to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent of general items A.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado.
Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number three, discussion of possible approval of the proposed lighting plan at Grassland Park and the Bisbee Mining and Historical Museum, Phase Three of the Copper Queen Plaza revitalization project. And we have both Mr. Wallace and Caitlin Tellings.
Come on down. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Over the past couple months, it was made aware of a promise made to us by Supervisor English from Cochise County Board of Supervisors, where they would be, they are willing to donate some money to finish Grassland Park, the Grassland Park Project. The museum, Carrie Gustafson, museum director, she reached out to Mr. Hopper, who donated his time and his expertise to help design a lighting plan for the Grassland Park Project. I believe we should have attachments as well. And I will say that there's a page missing that I removed because it had the actual, the cost per line of all the things, and I didn't think that would be good to go public if I'm going to go for bid on the entire project. So I thought that was probably a smart idea to pull that away. I believe, I think it's going to be the great, I guess, final piece for Grassland Park. This was brought to the Parks and Rec Committee, who did approve, as part of a suggestion to approve the plan. I would suspect that upon approval by the council, and some may be on my point of Mr. Hopper to helping draft the RFQ for the actual, for services, I hope probably by the end of December, beginning of the year, to have a contract before you for approval on the plan. I want to make sure we get this right. We will accept any personal contractor for this, locally or not, and we'll be in the bidding process.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cummings, you're the chair of the Parks Committee.
That I am, and we approve.
Thank you for being here, by the way. Thank you.
Very welcome. Happy to wait. Yeah, we approved it wholeheartedly. We thought it was a good idea. We liked the fixtures. Seems like a good safety plan, and hopefully reduce, we'll bend it.
Speak up.
Park.
Speak up.
I'm talking right into this. We approve the plan. Parks and Rec.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Mr. Hopper, you're signed up also, and we'd like to hear the nitty-gritty here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hopper.
And of course, the important thing is this is no cost.
I work with Carrie Gustafson, the director of the museum, on this project, as I had worked with her on the revitalization of the earlier project, which included landscaping and new hardscape and so forth. This project consists of four different types of fixtures. All of them, by the way, meet the shielding requirements of the city of Bisbee. Many of most of them are also dimmable, so there will be a ability to adjust the lights, and they're also programmable so that they can be turned on and off at various times during the night. The first type of fixture are two pole lights that shine onto the mining museum. The poles are 25 feet high, and so that they will be shining down onto the building rather than up into the sky. I had an illumination engineer do a calculation on the foot candles and how far that light would be spread out and behind, as you get back behind or along the side of the mining museum, the light goes down to zero foot candles, so that there won't be no overlight onto other properties. We also looked at the possibility of being up at the Copper Queen Hotel and looking down and seeing the light. That will not happen because the lights are down, and they have shields over them. Again, those lights are programmable, but it would add a very nice illumination to the front of that building. The second type of lights are solar ballasts, and they are located at the entry walkways into the park, and those are basically about three foot high, and they have a covering over the top. All these fixtures, by the way, are LED fixtures, so they will have a long lifespan. The third type of fixture C is a pole light, is actually has a gooseneck on it that has a cap. And this will light the sidewalk across from the mining museum over to, I guess it's called the Copper Queen Plaza. And then the fourth fixture is actually an existing fixture that we're moving from a location where it does not need to be over to the information displaying kiosk that's on the other side of the walkway. So overall, I think this is going to be a terrific improvement to the park and more life in the evening, and I think I highly recommend that you move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper. And also, I'd like to acknowledge that you're doing this gratis. I owe this work, and please sincerely appreciate your help on this. Thank you.
I just wanted to make additional comment, and that is the light fixture C, if you look at historic photographs of Bisbee, predominantly we had this gooseneck, we call it gooseneck lamp. You did not have this, what we think of the historic downtown with a pole with a bulb on the top of it. That never existed in Bisbee, and so that fixture C is exactly, if you look at historic photographs, is what was most used historically in old Bisbee. So again, I'm going to reinforce that. I move that we approve then the proposed lighting plan at Grassland Park and the Bisbee Mining and Historical Museum, Phase Three of the Copper Queen Plaza revitalization project.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Six, zero. Item number four, discussion of possible approval of a notice of intent to, thank you, Mr. Hopper, thank you, Ms. Cummings. Discussion of possible approval of a notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-1812, limiting the city code Article 2.7 Youth Council, Section 2.7.2 Membership, and providing for appeal and several ability. Ms. Hansen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really pleased with the youth council is really getting into a lot of the documents that govern the council. Unfortunately, the president is not here to speak a little bit to this. But basically what this does is it is we have a lot of youth that, not a lot, but there's a certain portion of youth that do graduate early and would still like to be part of the youth council. And right now, it's written as either eighteen or graduating. Well, if they graduated and they're not eighteen, they still can't be part of the council, so that takes care of this. Now, if they turn eighteen and they're on the council, there is a way to grandfather that so that they can finish their term. So that is the whole reason for it. And this is what they wanted to do, to make it easier to get people in and for having to stay.
Questions? By the way, thank you. The youth council's really been gratifying. It's been lasting for two years, coming from nothing to operating well. So it's great.
We're getting there. We're getting there. We've got a really great group of kids.
All right. While we hope to have the ladies and gentlemen carrying the flag next to.
That's right. And they're looking forward to it. They're designing their own flags, flag, too, for the council themselves.
Okay. And okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 0-18-12 to the city code Article 2.7 Youth Council, 2.7.2 Membership, and providing for appeal and several ability.
No second now. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Cornado.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, discussion and possible approval of Resolution R-1819, a resolution of the mayor of council, city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and state of Arizona, adopting a notice of intention to increase the wastewater rates and setting the date for public hearing of the proposed increase on February 5th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. May I assume that that's a regular council meeting? Yes, sir. So actually, what we're looking at is nothing more than a resolution setting the date. And we have, one thing I did want to discuss, and it won't let Mr. Smith do this, this came to the council about the setting of rates. And as I recall, we had many options, and one was not increasing the sewer rates for three years, then increasing it for three percent, and I, my best recollection was two percent the next year, and maybe three percent the year after that. And some members of the council said that perhaps we should look at increasing it basically one percent for those first three years. And so that's where we're at. I don't believe that a decision has been made.
No, Mayor. We still have the two choices, and I want to thank Carrie for her help with the staff report. In the staff report, we've outlined the rate adjustments that would be necessary year after year for a residential account. And you'll see in one of them, we've tried to keep that rate consistent, and another one, it bounces around just a little bit. And I wanted to, I wanted to show you something, if I can find it. I'm sorry, it took me a minute to do that. This is a website that's put out by the University of North Carolina, and they specialize in gathering utility rates from states and communities all across the country and enabling people to compare them within your state. What I've shown on the screen here is all of the sewer utilities in Arizona where the community has a similar income demographic as ours. And that would mean that the median household income is between 30 and 35,000 dollars. And so there's 17 communities in Arizona that have sewer systems with that income demographic. In the top left, this little dial here is strictly price, and so you can see that we're beyond the median. The median is $40, we're at 47.60. So we are higher than the median rate for a community our size with our income demographic, but we're not much higher. If council would like information about this link, I'd be happy to send it to you guys. There's lots of different ways to look at your rates. There's rate tables that will encourage conservation, which is the one in the top right, and we currently don't have a rate table that does that, and so that's the reason why we're scoring a little low on that. Cost recovery, you can see, given our depth and given our current, our current rate table, we're right on the border, which generally is where you want to be when it comes to cost recovery. And then median affordability, we're actually pretty affordable. The affordability is 1.8% of the median household income, and usually you want to keep that under two percent. So the rate tables that you're looking at will keep us in the same kind of shape in terms of comparison with other communities here in Arizona. We won't be average, but we won't be outrageously high either. We'll be managing it pretty well outside of that upper report.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Hanson.
So really what we're doing here is we're, that's the intention, which means that we're, this would be voted on later, and we're going to set it up to discuss.
It is, sir. It's required that we have a public meeting, and this is setting the date of the public meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Sir.
Can I, I want to add on to your comments here and respond to one of the comments made in general, all the public, and that is comparing our sewer rates with other communities, and that is the comment that I made that, you know, Bisbee's a ridiculous place in which we locate us in. We were spread out, three separate communities, each five miles apart. Most, you've seen when we updated the sewer system and we tried to dig things a little deeper, how difficult that was, pure, pure rock. And not only is it 15 miles from one point, one edge to the other edge of our community, but our community, it's another five miles into the waste treatment plant. Certainly, if you're in the Midwest where I am, where everything is flat, and you've got good topsoil, and it's pretty easy to dig a trench and put in a sewer system, we don't have that here. As I say, it's kind of a ridiculous place, and we're just located in the city, but here we are, and we love it, and unfortunately, one of the added costs of living here. Another comment, I think there's a couple of hypothetical errors. The memo from Mrs. Bagley on November 15th, the table, I think that the two lines are reversed, that option one is actually option two, and two is one. Also, on the revised report, which I don't have in front of me, it seems to me that table. table E S five, which is on page eight, is actually titled scenario one, which is actually scenario two.
Oh, is that on the exhibit, the picture? Because they had both of the scenarios labeled the same.
Correct. Right. That's correct. Okay.
Want to make a motion?
I'm just going to.
Sure.
I think the median income of thirty to thirty-five thousand is probably skewed for this city. I know, you know, just the people I've worked with, and I've had a couple that are very concerned that if their rates go up, they simply cannot afford, I mean, and it may not, a dollar, two, three, whatever, may not affect a lot of us, but there are still some that are very much affected by it. And I don't know.
Well, I might, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I might suggest that we discuss those, those things in the, in the time of need. Because all we're doing is voting on time of need. You're absolutely right.
I move to, the discussion's over. I move to approve resolution R dash eighteen dash nineteen and not taking a notice of intention to increase the wastewater rates and setting the date for public hearing of the proposed increase on February fifth, two thousand nineteen at seven P M.
Thank you. Tom, second. Ms. Corinella.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Mayor Protenta.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion of possible approval of emergency care of the UD garbage truck and mobile maintenance and towing LLC for the sanitation department, cost fifty-nine-hundred two dollars and ninety-two cents. Thank you, Mayor Corinella. Few, we consistently have been having trouble with our newer equipped garbage truck for Visby. It had a, an exhaust system that probably wasn't the best design, and it had not been taken care of before we got there. We, as, as you know, as you approved the House table, you've probably seen charges for this truck repeatedly. Well, the discussion with our mechanic and myself was, well, if we keep on setting it to the same place and it's still broken, let's find someplace new. And we did. And this is the cost for carrot. They found out the reason, the true reason why they're even having issues. It, we were hoping to get it before Thanksgiving because of the extra trash that we tend to give, but we should be giving it next week, a few days late. But I did, we did authorize. I reached out to legal, the city manager, to make sure that it wasn't violating legal rules, because this is kind of an emergency repair. So I do ask for your approval.
Questions?
Okay.
Yes, mayor?
Was this previously being sent to the city of Sierra Vista?
No, we have not used a Sierra Vista for this. We've, they sort of have used the UD dealer. I'm not sure UD sent, I've driven a lot of trucks, but they were UD. They have used the, you authorized UD repair in Tucson. So that's why, you know, I went with my, with the mechanic's recommendation of a different company. I would love to explore some more work with the county and service on things. We can get those repairs ourselves. I didn't have the time to do it this time. And it's something I'm looking into the future. I can't change it right away.
So I guess for the city manager, do we still have an I G A to the city of Sierra Vista or we have to go repairs?
We do, we have the ability to go there if we need to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the emergency repair of the UD garbage truck and mobile maintenance and towing LLC for the sanitation department, total cost five thousand nine hundred and two ninety-two cents.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say the vote is stated aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of the gap plan billing agreement between Health EMS and the city of Visby fire department. Chief Castillo and fire chief.
I'm the mayor of council. Our request to approve this gap billing agreement between Health EMS and the city of Visby fire department. Southeastern Arizona Collaborate, which paid Health EMS from a pool of other fire and EMS agencies. Southeastern Arizona Collaborate stopped paying into this about a year and a half ago. Health EMS medical software was going through some changes, and I got informed of this change. And for sixteen months, they charged us, and it was unknown to myself or EMS coordinator. And the amount is for two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Health EMS wanted Visby Fire to enter into a contract with them for five years at a cost of ten thousand five hundred, a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month or twenty-one hundred a year to get in this contract, plus a new system setup and collaboration fee of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, total consulting fee of four thousand eight hundred dollars. So we checked around and found a free software used by other agencies like Douglas and Sunlight Fire called Image Trend. Right now, we are using Image Trend because it's free. This, this software is free to us. But because of the decision not to be entered with Health EMS, the contract, they shut down the system on us. We still have numerous calls and reports into that system that need to be approved for billing purposes. Ambeserve, which is our billing company, uses this system as well to access reports for secondary billing. And they can't get into access to that either until it's paid. Also, there's some reports needed by the hospital that activated their trauma team and also for billing as well. So in order to get these calls for payment, we have to pay this bill or they can open up the system and we can download all the calls and we can send them out.
Isn't the chief really good at that point with Ambeserve and the software we're using?
Yes, we've downloaded this into our computers. Ambeserve also downloaded this, so they're now accessed into it. They are doing good enough for that. The current calls are getting out. But the previous calls that we had, they're locked in there. I'm not sure how many have been there until we accessed them, but there is outstanding bill that the city has to pay for these medical costs. So we'll get this together.
So this is a one-time thing?
This is a one-time thing because we're not entering in this contract.
Okay. And that's why it's a can. Okay. Any other questions?
How, how, how could they shut down that system? Who gave them the right to do that?
Well, like I say, it was, it was just a pool from, I was told it was from Southeastern Arizona Fire Department, a pool of other agencies. It was like a free. And then all of a sudden, they started charging certain departments. That's why they left. They never notified us that we, of that thing. So for sixteen months, we were using that system one night and they charged us.
And then they shut it?
And then they shut it down. And so now we have access to the calls.
So this will do it?
This will do it. And the one we got, I searched around to say the city one is free.
Right. Questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the gap planning agreement between Health EMS and the city of Visby Fire. Second?
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say the vote is stated aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O eighteen thirteen prohibiting the use of handheld mobile telephones or portable electronic devices by adding article nine point eight, distracted driving to the city code. In essence, this is a, sometimes called a hands-free law. Chief?
Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. My name's on this, but Chief Castillo and I are kind of on the same page with this. Distracted driving is definitely a problem. There's all kinds of distractions people have in their car. Something as simple as changing the radio station in the car can distract you long enough to have a traffic accident. But these little devices that we all carry, we all use and we all rely upon every day, they, they speak for a big number of that. And so this is, this is, the ordinance was brought together. Mr. Hanson helped us out with this and put this all together for us. We reviewed it. My staff has reviewed it. Chief Castillo has reviewed it. And I feel personally it's a, it answers some of those concerns and addresses some of those problems. Triple A accounts, they're distracted driving, or triple A states distracted driving accounts for twenty-five to fifty percent of all accidents. It is a huge problem. Nine plus people per day in two thousand and sixteen died due to distracted driving. Nine plus per day. It's a huge problem. And as of yet, the legislation for the state of Arizona has not enacted a distracted driving law or statute, a primary offense. This makes up for that. Now, it does still allow for certain emergency situations. If you're in a situation where you need to call a nine one one, for example, an emergency response dispatcher, the ordinance allows for you to do that. It allows for you to talk on your phone so long as you're using a hands-free device. If your phone is mounted to your dash or a car holder or a phone holder and attached to your Bluetooth system, you can talk as you're driving down the road, but you can't manipulate it. And you shouldn't be fiddling with the numbers as you're driving down the road. This is a primary event, so if a police officer sees you doing these things as you're driving down the street, this could simply afford you to stop you for that. It's not a secondary event, which would be like a seatbelt violation that he could ask you about after the, the issue. So definitely something we feel strongly about. I can tell you, the police department, in, in my history, we've never tracked this, this specific thing. So in order to find numbers on how many distracted driving accidents we have in Visby, that'd be a huge challenge because we'd have to go report by report by report because this, this thing itself is not something we track. But I can tell you, being a police officer here for nineteen-plus years, their accidents are caused by intention and by distraction. And those, those can be avoided, and we need to take action to, to make research. So among you, Chief Steel, have anything?
And you guys can debate about that, Chris.
Yeah, just like our chief of justice said, I support his decision as well. Numerous accidents we've been on, also more distracted drivers, about whom we've asked, you know, hide at their phone or social media while driving. It seems we've got a lot of teenagers who have told us. But yeah, we're looking for this to pass so we can kind of reduce the accidents in the state of Arizona so that we're responding.
Great. Thank you. Obviously, there's a number of jurisdictions throughout the state of Arizona, and counties, many counties as an example, but we have other jurisdictions of cities and towns that this is.
That is correct. Coral Valley, recently, Prescott, city of Prescott was in the process of working on theirs, city of Surprise, and Yampai County also, as well as many others. But that's just some of the most latest shit out of that list.
Ms. Hanson, you have a question?
Since we're a tourist town, obviously we're going to be getting people from all over Arizona and other places. Is there any mechanism to let people know and get that word out?
There's signs.
There are going to be signs?
Yes. With my travel, I see it all the time. You know, this is a hands-free community.
And I think it's important to note also that, as with any traffic violation, the discretion falls upon the officer who witnesses that violation and who conducts that traffic stop. That officer has a discretion to issue a warning if it can be, or if it's a, if it's a serious or a near accident event, that's something more serious, that they have the, they have the ability to write that traffic ticket. Some officers are affected by this more than others. I, I, I know of people who have lost their lives due to distraction and traffic accident. Simplest dropping a C D on the floorboard, reaching down to pick it up, and fatalities. One of my classmates, right here out on Highway eighty several years ago. But it's, it's, that distraction is a big deal. So some officers might say, much like child restraints, there's no warnings. Your child should be restrained, there's no warning, you shouldn't be on your phone. Again, that comes down to the officer's discretion and the officer who'd be testifying to that before the magistrate, if there was a citation that was filed.
Thanks, chief.
Yes?
Ms. Fung, do you have something?
All right. I have a comment that, first of all, it's something from declining vision, and I'm increasingly aware that Visby is just one big curve. You know, we don't have any straight road anywhere. If you're going down, you say, well, you know, I'm going ahead and, and there's a curve waiting for you. There are a few feet, I mean, there is.
It's kind of like when you were a kid walking to school and that hill both for you.
If you're not alert, you gotta hit a curve. That's what I'm finding in terms of declining vision, and, and this is even more important here in Visby, so.
Absolutely. It is a better. Thank you, sir. Anybody? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve, I move to approve the motion to attempt to adopt ordinance, uh, that, 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 that,
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Castillo, and Chief Chaukey, you're still there. Discussion, item number nine, discussion of possible approval to allow mayor and council to go into an agreement between Arizona Department of Homeland Security for Operation Stone Garden Award Number 160430-01 and the Police Department in the amount of $17,105 for relocation of 2016 funds to operation, I'm sorry, to include overtime employee-related expenses and mileage. And I might add, I think this is our second time that we've moved this forward.
This is actually reallocation of funds for 2016. So the first one was the original grant for this year. We have about $70,000. This is funds that were distributed throughout the state that other agencies weren't able to use. Oh, God, it comes back to the group, and it's redistributed amongst the other agencies. So these are, these are funds that will be reallocated from fiscal year 16 that they're still trying to get spent, so that's.
Are you one of the officers?
My officer would love the opportunity.
Absolutely. Do we have a question? Here we go. Do we have a motion?
I move, I move to allow the mayor and council to go into an agreement between Arizona Department of Homeland Security for Operation Stone Garden Award Number 160430-01 and the Police Department in the amount of $17,105 for reallocation of 2016 funds to include overtime employee-related expenses and mileage.
Second?
We have a second.
Second?
We have one, we have one. We've got a, Ms. Cornell?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. And I will stand by the sound. Item number 10, discussion of possible approval of the engagement of Mark Reader-Stiefel for Financial Services, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe in a prior work session, Matt McCarron and I have presented some thoughts to council about conversion of our street lights to LED and improvement of some of our pumps and equipment at the wastewater treatment plant to reduce electrical consumption. Arizona has a provision for that under Legislative Act entitled Title III, which binds the company that creates the project to make up the difference if the energy savings doesn't reduce by the project cost amount. At the time that we discussed this, there were some questions about financial structure and how will we pay for it, where those funds will come from, and what would it cost? And in order to provide that to council, we need some research done in Arizona's lending markets, particularly with WIPA, because some of the funds will come as a subsidized grant through WIPA. Mr. Reader is especially familiar with that area. He has shopped Arizona's lending markets for us before. He's the professional we use for the wastewater debt restructuring at WIPA. He's the professional that helped us with the origination loan for the wastewater treatment plant. He and Stiefel are very good at doing this. They're very familiar with the lending instruments, and his expertise is needed to shop that. So in order for me to bring something back for you to consume and understand, I need to have someone who's familiar with those lending markets produce a plan for you. Mr. Reader is willing to do that. Engagement of his services comes at no cost unless you decide to do the project. So if all you want from him is research, he can run the numbers for you if you will engage him at no cost. If you choose at a later date to pursue the project, based on the engagement letter, you're bound to use his services and pay him for it.
Great. Questions? Ms. Wagner?
Okay, so we would only pay if we move forward with the project, but what does that be?
I don't know. It's some percentage of the amount of money that's financed. I would assume it would be similar to the percentages that were paid when we refinanced the wastewater debt.
Okay, so refresh my memory. What was the percentage?
I don't recall.
Was it less than 40%?
Well, no, that was our finance figure. It was kind of a cheap check.
This isn't something that we could have our finance department look into? We have to go out again?
I do not believe that we are able to do that, and that's the reason why Stiefel and Mr. Reader and professionals like him are here. They represent cities in front of WIPA's board on a regular basis to request and apply for grants. They also shop. The bond market and private market, that's where our loan instrument came on to restructure the wastewater. These cities include Phoenix and Tucson and the largest cities in the state, not just small ones where we have a finance department that, I mean, it's a pretty sophisticated financial undertaking, and so that's, that's what they do for cities.
I'm sure it is, but I think I still have confidence in our staff here that they could do this and we don't have to go out yet again.
Welcome.
I don't think, can I just make a comment to that?
Sure.
Our finance department is a work right now, and to do something like that would take how many hours? It would be a full-time project for a pretty long time, and I don't think that we should have to burden them with that. They're trying to keep up with what they're doing now and to improve the system. I still think that that's fair to do to them.
One thing to look at perhaps is that engaging him to do the research is free. And if we want to act on my research, then that does cost. But even if we had the finance in a position that they could do this, then we're paying them to do the research. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor, I haven't done this before, but I believe I could get a list of certifications that are necessary to act within the capacity that Mr. Reader and his firm acts, and I could bring that to the council, and I think that would be helpful. Yeah, well, that's what I was trying to get at, is that Ms. Wagner, with all due respect, does not have the certifications or the experience to go before WIPA negotiating a loan. Yes, sir, and it may be that WIPA is only part of the financing solution. I was just using that to say. Yes. Exactly.
Mr. Higgins?
Yeah. It seems in some ways that we're putting the cart before the horse or just moving. You know, we don't know that at that point, this council, if this was going to be approved. I understand the idea of having this lined up, so that if it was approved by the council, then we would already have something in place. But I'm afraid that we're going to burden Mr. Reader with doing his work, doing his research for us, and then there's a great possibility that it won't pass. And then Mr. Reader has been unduly burdened by us for no reason. So I think, you know, we, maybe we would want to decide what we're going to do about Seamen's, Seamen's first, and then we can come back and talk about this. Because it seems like lining up the financing for a project that we actually haven't decided that we're going to do just doesn't seem to make sense.
I think that the reason that this has come up is because the last time we talked about this, people wanted to know about what the financing might possibly be. And really, to make a decision on this, that's part of that. You need to know, you need to care inside without knowing what potentially you're going to spend, get the money, and all of that. So I think if we go back again without doing this piece of it, the council won't be able to make a decision.
That's a, that's a good point.
It's kind of chicken and egg.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, that's a good point. And would, how would exactly do they know, you know, how much, you know, Seamen's hasn't done a survey yet, how would they actually be able to advise Mr. Reader about, okay, we're going to need this much money? I mean, is, could they do that without actually surveying the town? They can do it?
Mr. Smith?
Councilman, yes, that's exactly the next work that would take place. And trust me, you will not offend Mr. Reader if you engage him and you decide you don't want to do the project. He does this all the time.
The exciting part of Title 34 legislation is it has finance component here. Otherwise, these energy efficient improvements, we would have to fund them item by item out of our own annual budget, and the fact that we package them through Seamen's here and then market them as whether it's revenue bonds or whatever, and he certainly will know.
The way.
Where to go, or how we can get this done with the cheapest interest rate as he did with refinancing of our wastewater treatment. And so certainly moving forward with the Title 34 without a finance package doesn't make any sense at all, so.
So, okay, I move approval of engagement of Mark Reader for Financial Services.
A second. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Cornell?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes by the way. You have a city manager's report, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, actually, I do. I'm sorry to hold you here, but I wanted to give you guys a few pieces of information. You'll see this in the paper pretty soon. We were just looking at budgeted expenditures, and this year's budget is considerably smaller than last year's budget. Last year's budget was about $2 million. This year's budget is about $16 million. And I wanted to give council some preliminary figures on our 1718 year. Our actual revenue or expenditures numbers, if you discount the fire, we spent half a million on the fire, we got 2.6 million from the insurance company, if you discount that. I actually are finishing up that year with $100,000 left there. And I think this is the first time we've finished a period in the life of a long, long time, so I'm really excited about that. I also wanted to add, you know, I've heard some people that have expressed some fear that we're outsourcing, that we're reducing our employment here in the city. We did eliminate three part-time positions this last year, but we added nine full-time positions this year. So, you know, I get it that we did lose a couple of part-time positions, but adding nine full-time positions within a smaller budget, working with the issues that our staff has had to work with, is pretty incredible. I've been really impressed. I just wanted to mention that we are attempting to work with Tucson's Habitat for Humanity as well as Step Up Bisbee. We're meeting with folks about low and moderate income housing. We're looking forward to pulling a project proposal together for council to look at. I've also been talking with the Council of Governments, SEMO, they have CPG at Home, Grant, SAVI people. I would like to create a housing rehabilitation program here. The state has about $300,000 a year that they can provide to the city, and qualifying applicants who meet any income restrictions can get up to $40,000 of work done on their home. So we want to keep that $300,000 rolling in year after year. Also, I wanted to say that the work that we're doing with the county on public works trucks and police cars is turning out really well for us. We've gotten, I think, four police cars now, is that right? Five? And we have about as many public works trucks that have been retired out of county service, and some of them we're taking care of ourselves. We have our own garage, and we do our own maintenance work, but some of them we're letting the county fleet guys continue to maintain. So we're trying to optimize how we spend our money to get the best bang for our buck there. Oh, and I've seen some confusion out there about what we're doing with the county and county development services. We are spending $2,500 a month with county development services. For that, we have Mr. Paulus Farses help with planning his zoning work as well as designing review board work. And the county planners are also helping us apply for a state historic preservation grant of $20,000 to help us get the Lauren Historic District finished. And the county planners are also working to get our zoning maps in their GIS system so that anybody with access to the internet can pull up a map of Bisbee and see where their property is and find out what the zoning is and drill into that. So we're very proud of what we're getting in terms of cooperative support from the county. And put that, Mayor, in my report.
Thank you. Yes, I would. We have a second. All those in favor, say in favor. I oppose, say in sign. We're unanimous. We are adjourned.